Thank you, and Commissioner Eggenberger, could you please call the roll?
Sure. That work?
Uh, try again.
No.
Nope.
Could be good, the light's on.
You just have to talk closely.
Okay. There we go. Commissioner Cruz.
Commissioner Cruz has a meeting conflict tonight. He said he was gonna try to make it, but I'm not sure if he was able to have a substitute go to his other meeting, so if he's not here, it'll be excused.
You might not be audible on the tape, but you don't have to repeat that, I think.
I won't.
Commissioner Cruz is excused.
Got it. Commissioner Eggenberger, here. Commissioner Foster.
Here.
Commissioner Janowski.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Watkins.
He might have a conflict here. I'll look at my emails. I think he sent something to me, though. Yeah, he did. He's got a work conflict tonight.
Commissioner Weber.
President.
And Chairperson Zubor.
I am here, thank you. All right, so we have minutes from August 19th. Oh, I'm sorry, I should say that we have staff. We have Patrick Sloan and Aaron Schluto here, and we have our consultant, Agusa, here this evening. Thank you. Courtney Agusa, I'm sorry. So, yes. So, next thing is the approval of minutes of September... Wait a minute, I'm looking at the wrong thing on my screen here. The minutes of September 9th. Anyone want to make a motion?
Boo to approve.
Okay.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Foster to approve the minutes of September 9th. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And is there anything to add or delete from the agenda this evening, Patrick?
No changes to the agenda.
Okay, awesome. Could we have a motion in favor of accepting the agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Lee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any post? All right. Any communications, Patrick?
No communications, other than what was in the packet.
Okay, awesome. And we have a public comment period for any individual, may speak for a maximum of three minutes, and anyone who wants to speak must provide their name and address for the record if you want to talk about anything that is on the agenda or not. Anybody? Okay. Sir, please state your name and address for the record.
Charles Hudson, 2022 Elmhurst, Canton. I'm here, I spoke last month in support of the amendment with my property that goes along the lots, and they're like making an amendment. Although that was the first I was like able to talk, meeting-wise, I've actually been, it goes back to May since I've been trying to get this done, and I understand it might take... I understood that tonight was a night to set up a meeting for a public, a public meeting on it, but it might go into December, and I know there's a meeting in November. I didn't know if it would help if I tried to see if maybe I could get in November. I don't know how that works, but it's like every day, just it counts, it's... I'm really going under a kind of... in debt since all of this started. And I'm just here to support the amendment. That's about all I have to say.
Could you refresh our memories? What was that about, on lots?
Yeah, it's my...
Conforming lots.
I have three lots. You can build on empty lots of 40-foot, but if your house goes across two of the lots, you can't, the way the ordinance is written. So, Patrick was making an amendment.
Yes, thank you, yes.
Yeah.
And we're gonna talk about that.
To where I can sell the three lots.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much, yeah. Anyone else?
But we would have to vote on it, then it goes to township board, right?
Right. Yeah, so there's a process that we have to follow for that, so, yes. Okay, and then, anybody else want to speak from the audience? I would encourage our scouts to get on the camera and tell us why you're here. Could you tell us your name and address at the podium? You're very brave to do that, but you have to talk into the mic, please.
I honestly haven't memorized my address yet. I'm working on it right now.
Okay.
But it's over there on the paper, but my name's Macao Hermanson, and me and my friend, we're here because we have this merit badge.
Awesome.
That we're doing for scouts, and we need to attach... it's citizenship and the community, and we just need to get this done. Like, we need to get... we need to go to a meeting, and then, like, there's a couple of other things we need to do with like charity and all that.
Ah.
And so, we're here to like listen in, write down some notes, and then complete our merit badge.
Well, now you'll be on the YouTube channel, so...
You can prove that you were here.
There's evidence that you were here, so I don't know if you want to come up and say anything, too. Do you want to tell us your name?
You gotta talk.
Yeah, you gotta go to the mic, sorry. Your chance to get over your shyness.
Hopefully. I'm Samantha Longa. My address is 405277 Lotte Road, Kenton, Michigan. And we're basically here because it's equal of kind, and we, like, me and Macao decided to do this mostly because it's equal of kind, but it's also good to know about your community, and like, what's good, like, the issues and everything that's important.
Awesome. Well, thanks for coming. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask us after the meeting.
You mean you're not here to actually hear what we have to say? You're just here to get it done?
And we'll take anybody, you know? It's awesome.
That's true.
Anybody else want to say anything? All right. Parents, thank you.
Welcome to our meeting.
Okay, somehow... Okay, very good. So, Patrick, we do not have any public hearings this evening. We have no... well, we have old business, the zoning ordinance text amendment. So, Patrick, tell us all about what we need to do tonight, what we need to know.
Sure. At the September 16th work session, we discussed a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance to address non-conforming lots, and at that time, the proposed ordinance amendment was acceptable in form to the planning commission, to the point where we could bring it to the planning commission at a regular meeting this evening to formally set the public hearing on that proposed ordinance amendment. So, our recommendation is to formally set the public hearing for the proposed amendment to Section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to address non-conforming lots of record. And in terms of the comment regarding which meeting this would be at, we'll work administratively and trying to get that on the next available agenda. In November, the agenda schedule is a little irregular, because the first Monday in November, when we would typically meet, that's the day before the election, and this room will be unavailable with all the setup of the equipment, et cetera, and the following Monday will be Veterans Day and will be closed. So, it won't be until the third Monday, which I think is the 19th. That's penciled in as a work session, but we could convert that to a regular meeting if we needed to, which we might need to do anyway, because there may be applicants that are expecting a November meeting and aren't able to make it to the first Monday. So, more than likely, that third Monday in November will be a regular meeting of the planning commission, but we'll keep everyone updated on that.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. So, we have to... anyone want to make a motion about that, or discuss it further?
I move to set the public hearing for the proposed amendments to Section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance as provided in the attached ordinance proposal for non-conforming lots of record.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Eggenberger and support by Commissioner Singh. Any further discussion?
How are we saying a public hearing without knowing the date?
We're assigning it to Patrick's staff.
Yeah, I'll make sure ahead of time that everyone's able to attend. I know sometimes at the work sessions, that adds some complexity, so I'll make sure that we'll at least have a quorum available for the 18th, and assuming we do, then we can schedule the public hearing for that date.
And then, after the public hearing, what happens?
Sure. After the public hearing, if the planning commission recommends approval, then the proposed amendment will proceed to the Board of Trustees at its next available meeting, which would probably be probably in early December sometime, and there's two readings of the township board, so we would try to get those as quickly as possible and through the board process. And then, if it's adopted, we'd be looking at adoption of possible December, maybe early January, depending on how the meeting schedules line up.
Okay.
But if we can catch earlier meetings, we'll try.
Okay. I want to call the vote, and then I have another question. So, Commissioner Eggenberger, could you please call the vote?
Sure.
Commissioner Eggenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner, or Chairperson Zubor.
Yes, thank you. So, motion carries. Is there anything that we can do to help this gentleman with his particular property, knowing that this amendment is in process? Or we just have to wait for the process to work out?
In this case, we'd have to wait for the process to work out. In terms of the lots themselves, we can discuss with our engineering division and our building division in terms of ensuring that the lots are viable according to how the draft ordinance is written. So, we can work on that in the background, and just so that anything we need to do internally lines up with the amendment.
Okay. Great. So, I would recommend that you reach out to Patrick to talk to the engineering division, too. And good luck. Yeah, yeah. Very good. All right, moving along, we have an item of new business for Kava Restaurant, so where we are considering a proposal to paint the brick on the building at 43450 Ford Road, also known as parcel number 040-99-0011-702. This property used to be known as Boston Market. It's property located on the northwest corner of Ford Road and Morton Taylor. There are other proposed updates that are being reviewed administratively, including parking lot repairs and minor site changes, but we are talking... we are here specifically to discuss the proposal to paint the brick. Patrick, please tell us more.
Thank you. Kava is proposing to locate at the former Boston Market site at the northwest corner of Ford and Morton Taylor, and in 1994, the site was approved for a special land use and site plan for Boston Market at that time, for a drive-through fast food restaurant. Kava proposes to use the same building footprint, the same layout for the site, same number of parking spaces, same pickup window location, to have a drive-through fast food restaurant. And so, the reoccupancy of the site by itself is an administrative site plan review, because there are no substantial site changes that have to be reviewed by the planning commission. Some of the site changes are improvements, including installing curbing around the existing perimeter of the parking lot. Right now, there's bumper blocks, so having curbing there will be a much cleaner appearance and easier to... easier to plow, easier to maneuver, and would bring that parking lot into compliance in terms of having the curbing. There's also some proposed signage, including directional signage, and there are also some updates to site lighting and landscaping to comply with the previously approved plans for Boston Market. There are some changes proposed to the building facade, such as wood lattice, canopy, painting some of the ephes, and adding canopy area and other spots of the building to make improvements to kind of a dated building. One of the proposed facade changes is to paint the brick white, and while most of the facade changes are reviewed by planning division staff administratively, the proposal to paint the brick is a significant change that requires planning commission review because of how substantial it is, and when Boston Market was approved, it had the natural brick as part of its approved site plan. So, there's a representative for Kava this evening, and he's from Mid-America Realty, and he's not directly with Kava, and he's not one of their architects, so he can speak to the real estate, he can speak to some of the things that Kava and their team is working on to address any of the questions, concerns, and present any items about the project. Similar to other cases recently where there's a proposal to paint masonry, our recommendation is that the painting of the masonry not be approved, and one of the reasons is that the paint, it encapsulates the brick, and so it traps the moisture inside the brick. So, when we go through our freeze-thaw cycle, and the water inside the brick, or the moisture inside the brick is freezing and thawing, that can crack the brick, that can make the facade start to crumble and have a poor effect on the facade. So, paint is a substance, we don't recommend putting that on brick. Another reason is that with the painted brick, it would... it keeps the wall one solid color, so all the brick, all the mortar, it has... it would have one solid color, it would look like almost a poured concrete form wall, because there's no difference in the color of the mortar, or even the colors within the bricks that come out. So, those are a couple of reasons we don't recommend painting the brick, especially on a scale as what's proposed on the plan. Conversely, at last month's meeting, we talked about a proposal to lime wash a building in Canton that's on the west side of Canton Center Road, north of Hanford, and for that particular building, the lime washing has been completed. It looks really nice. We've got some pictures here to share, if you'd like to see them, and that lime washing, it not only allows the brick to breathe, so there's not the issue of it trapping moisture. Also, because of the light coloring, and in that case, it was like a white or a light gray lime wash, there are still distinctive opaque colorings that come through the brick from behind. So, the brick looks... it almost looks natural on the brick. You can see some of the distinct opaqueness across the bricks, and you can also see how the mortar joints are contrasted with the brick material itself. So, that was a project that turned out really well in terms of having and/or achieving the desired intent of the lime washing, and that's something that we've since recommended to other businesses and developers who want to consider doing some kind of a coloring or painting of the brick, including in this case, we suggested the lime washing proposal to the applicants. They had opted to continue forward with their proposal to paint the brick, which is their right to do, so we're presenting that as a proposal from the applicant this evening. But because of the success of the lime washing and some of the traits of it that make a brick building look attractive in many instances, that's something that we would recommend considering in this case. So, that concludes our staff review of this proposal. Our recommendation is to deny the proposal to paint the brick on the building at 43450 Ford Road, and also that the proposed denial is only a denial of painting the brick, it's not a denial of their application. Their application number for all their site improvements is 040-DIR-8351. If the proposal to paint the brick is denied, it's only that proposal within the plan that's denied. The rest of the site plan would remain under review and would not be denied, so I just wanted to make that distinction. So, that concludes our staff report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Very good, thank you. I would like to see the pictures. I mean, I've driven by several times, it's very difficult to get luck when I'm...
I stopped and looked on the way here tonight. It's very nice.
Oh, good. Yeah.
Okay, so...
It is white.
Here it is, looking from the entrance drive. Try to zoom in on the brick.
Excuse me, what... the color was red before? Was it a red brick?
Yeah.
Brownish red.
And it turned to that with the lime wash?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Up another one. This is the front as it faces Canton Center Road.
One other question. You said it doesn't really harm the brick, so this is breathing, it's like regular brick, it's just a different color that you apply by simply blasting with whatever it was, right? Is that what lime wash you call it?
It's a brushed-on finish, is it not? It's like paint in the way you apply it, but it's not solid.
What is the disadvantage to this?
Yeah.
The disadvantage of lime washing?
Expensive.
Yeah, it's more expensive. I don't know the material itself, but I think the application, not all painters can do it. There's a special application method to it, so it does make it more expensive, and finding a painter that can do it. In this case, I think the owner had used a local painter, who we have his contact information. We've shared that with anyone who's interested in lime washing, just to let people know that there's someone, at least one known person, that can do lime washing, and there are some other vendors that are known that are out of state.
One... I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna ask. I see the wetness there. Is that a discoloration, or is it just damp?
I think it's just the dampness.
Just damp. Okay, good.
Patrick, did it...
It's not that expensive either. It's approximately, I think, $240 for a four-gallon bucket, which covers 1,800 square feet.
I think that the expense is in finding the right person to do it.
Right.
Patrick, has anybody mentioned or provided the opportunity for... I've done this quite a bit with historical buildings where the brick... the only brick we could get would... because it was structural, was actually stained. So, you could do the same thing with the stain, and the stain actually is remarkable. You wouldn't think it would turn out good, but it does the same properties, allows the brick to breathe.
Okay.
And I thought that, too.
So, if you're not going white, you have an option, and depending on how you apply it, you know, you could do multiple tones and stuff to get almost... I've even seen a dark brick turn out lighter, so...
Really?
Yeah.
Good to know.
Okay. I think... I'm trying to think where I've seen that before. I know it's been... I've seen stain on split face block to try to color it without encapsulating the block, but, yeah, we'll also suggest that as well for any stains that are like a non-white or a non-gray, where they just want to color it another earth tone.
I mean, I think most, like Sherwood Williams will support that. I know they support the painting of the bricks. I've done that before, too, but they probably have some expertise.
So, when you suggested this to other parties that have come in that want to paint brick, what's the reception then?
There haven't been many so far, so we really haven't gotten much of a reception. It's only been a few weeks since the last meeting, but we've sent it to Kava, and I think one other, I can't really remember who, but...
So, has Kava said, "No, we don't want to do this," or are they just...
Yeah, they mentioned that they prefer to go ahead with the proposal to paint, and I think it has to do with some of their other national stores where they paint the brick.
Patrick, I was looking online and just looking at other pictures of Kava restaurants, and there's some that have red brick.
Yeah. Yeah, and even all sorts of fast food franchises, they tailor their architecture to whatever the local community's regulations are. So, even McDonald's has built some pretty exquisite McDonald's franchises, depending on what community that they're in, those requirements.
Was it McDonald's? I didn't ever think I would wear those two together.
Yeah.
I mean... Huh. So, one, is there existing moisture in when you apply the paint? Two would be, is it acting like a screen wall? Or, you know, does water run down behind it? Those are the two main questions. And then, if you do make it where it's isolated, and you have... you have to go through the same steps or the special steps that Sherwood Williams puts across where you have to etch it, and then you have to make sure it's completely sealed as a unit. So, I don't know if they can do that, and that's what'll lead to a success on keeping the brick and painted for a long period of time. I did my old house, and it's... I did that, oh, maybe 30 years ago, and it still has the same coat of paint that I put on.
We have denied other applicants' painting, right? I just think that we need to be consistent across the board.
But we've also approved... we have approved...
Wait, could you speak into the mic, because I can barely hear you.
We've approved others, too. We approved Buff City Soap right across the street.
Yeah, they had a... when they came in, they had a painted block that was already painted as part of the movie theater, and they painted that another color of gray, and they put in the thin brick tiles over some of that block. In that case, they had the thin brick. In the Michigan Government and Education Credit Union on Ford Road, that brick was denied for painting.
But that was more because we didn't like the color.
Yeah, it was like a solid, light yellow. And then, painting brick, I think, when Meyer was approved a few years ago for their renovations, they painted a portion of their brick to match part of it, and in that case, there was a limited amount of that brick that was allowed to be painted.
There's values there already, or some of their other renovations where they did it, they didn't... whoever was doing it didn't do a good job, so...
Say that again, I couldn't hear you.
Some of the Myers locations, they did the same type of renovation elsewhere, where they painted the brick, and they didn't do a good job. You can see the... it's already failing.
I feel like they can make it look nicer.
I agree.
Yeah.
Should we let the representative speak, though?
Yeah, do you want to say anything?
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't you go introduce yourself and...
Yeah.
We gotta make it worth your while.
Yes.
So, you'll be on the video, too.
Did you get a merit badge for being here?
My name is Tony Schmidt. I'm with Mid-America... I meant, sorry, 681 Overhill, I'm out of Bloomfield, and I'm with Mid-America Real Estate, as Patrick mentioned. So, we represent Kava in bringing them into the state of Michigan. So, the one thing that Kava just wanted to make sure that we... everyone was... it was known as to why they want to go and paint the brick is there... this will be their first location in the state. So, they just went public, they have about 350 locations right now, so they really wanted to bring their brand and really make it stand out and make it be a really cool building. There are many buildings where they have different type of materials that are on their facades, and they work with all communities to get into... to work with the communities and what they want, but as far as the design team for their first store, they were excited, and they want to be on that corner and create that look, so that's why they came up and said, "We'd like to see it all uniform, one color, to match the... what's going to go around, you know, when they redo the old facade, too." So, that's the reason why they wanted that painted.
Thank you. That helps.
Thank you.
Well, we sure are excited to see something else come into that building, that's for sure.
For sure.
Yes.
Been vacant for a long time. I don't know, anybody?
Well, I'm... I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, the only thing I was gonna add, what I love about good architects, they can take a building like that, create a new brand, and really make it look special. So, I'm not challenged by that at all. If you got a good architectural team, they'll take that building and keep the same brick and make it look beautiful. I know that, right? Speak to an architect.
Let them know we're judging.
I like the looks of the building, but I... I'm hesitant to approve the painted brick, especially when we know about the lime washing out there now.
Or staining, yeah.
Or staining.
Because you can do a white, a solid stain.
I think there's ways they can establish and make their brands stand out, and I understand it might cost a little more money, but if it's their... if this is their first store in Michigan, they want to make it stand out, then here's the opportunity. Just, that's my feeling about it. I'm not necessarily opposed to painting the brick, but when there's other options, I would prefer that that be pursued first.
Anybody else? We've just kind of had a free-for-all here, but...
Yeah.
I would think that if they came up with a proposal, as was mentioned, example, the breathable paint, or, you know, more of an approach to demonstrating that the product will last long, it'll actually help them better, too, in the long term, because they won't have any maintenance, and that brick could stay good for 20 years, so instead of having it painted five years or have it degrade and fall off, if moisture gets stuck in there.
Yeah, I mean, Kava wouldn't look good if all the bricks started falling, so, yeah. Yeah, I think that's a very good point.
Actually, their rendering won't even look the same if they paint it, because the brick doesn't look painted there. Looks like a stain or a lime wash.
It does.
It looks like it's translucent.
There, yeah. Nancy's an expert now.
Yes. She, I mean, she's seen a lime washed building, so, driving by.
10 minutes ago, yeah.
Yeah.
I really do like the look of, like, the aesthetic.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I like the whole building. I just, I would prefer that they do that.
So do you want to make a motion?
I can't, I can't pull mine up, so.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I move to deny.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Lee and support by Commissioner Foster. Any further discussion? Commissioner Egenberger, could you please call the vote?
Sure. Commissioner Egenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zubor?
Yes. All right, motion carries.
So if they choose one of these other options, Patrick, do they have to come back to us, or can you guys review and approve it?
We would bring the proposal back to the Planning Commission, probably at the November meeting, unless there was another motion made that allowed staff to approve anything that, anything else.
I hate to see, make them come back to another meeting, but whatever, I mean, I'll do.
Do we want to amend the motion or make a separate motion?
No, I think we need to wait and see.
Authorize staff?
Oh, just, okay.
Yeah, depending on what they decide. We can, we can let Patrick.
With what? I didn't hear.
You can administratively approve whatever they come back with, dramatically different.
Sure, we can, we can do that. If you want to craft a motion, I'm not sure if that would be an amended motion or a new motion.
Commissioner Lee, I probably forgot about this. Was it seconded?
Yes.
And we voted on it.
I need to vote on it, okay. Sorry, I was looking at the pictures and the menu of Kava. I was like, what is this place? I've never heard of it, so, sorry. I was doing my own intel, I guess. So if you're gonna give Patrick the authorization to go ahead and make an administrative internal decision on next steps, so long as it's not dramatically different than what was discussed here, you can simply go ahead and give him that authority by just saying, you know, I make a motion to authorize Patrick or the Planning Department to work with Kava, am I saying that right, Kava, to address the exterior paint. Like, it doesn't have to be anything theatrical, and if, after Patrick consults with them, there's any issues, then he can simply just come back and consult with you. I mean, that's all it really has to be. It doesn't have to be anything intricate, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Are you comfortable with that, Patrick?
I'll try this. You got a lot said there. We authorize that the planning staff can finalize this with the developer if it's not outside of what was principally agreed on before.
The parameters of the discussion of the Planning Commission.
As a part of the parameters of the discussion that was at this meeting. Good enough? Thank you.
I will support that.
Okay, so we have another motion by Commissioner Lee and support by Commissioner Foster. Any further discussion? Commissioner Egenberger, please call the vote.
Okay, Commissioner Egenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zubor?
Yes. Good luck. Yeah, we can't wait till you open. When do you think?
When do you think you'll open? When will they open?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, fair. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Listen, guys, we don't sound like when they're gonna get there, so.
It's pretty awesome.
Well, we'll be the first one in Michigan.
Oh, look at that, so cute. So our next item of business is master plan discussion, so led by Erin. Are we gonna have some fun with this?
We always have fun.
I know.
Hold on, I just have to duplicate my, I have to duplicate my screens here. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
Yeah.
Come on, come on, come on.
Were you blonde as a kid?
I was, yeah. My mom, my sister and I, we were all very, very, very blonde, so.
Funny, I was too, really little, yeah.
I had hair when I was little.
Did you? That's really hard to picture.
I was hoping that my daughter would come out with red hair, just to throw everything for a loop. Okay. Okay, here we go. Now the fun starts.
All right.
Okay. So, good evening, everybody. This is the discussion on the master plan, and this, the draft chapters that we're going to be discussing today were provided to the Planning Commission in a separate email outside of the packet last week, as well as this presentation. So you've seen this before. So just to recap our previous discussion last month, where we finished up discussing housing and neighborhoods and the possibility to explore alternate building materials for the facade, as well as Cherry Hill Village and transportation. Building materials, housing and neighborhoods, Cherry Hill Village had very few comments. There were quite a few comments related to the transportation section, which are being implemented, and you'll see those at a later date. So for this evening, we are going to finish up the discussion portion for these chapters of the master plan. So we're looking at environmental preservation and implementation chapters, as well as continuing our discussion on potential names for the master plan, and then just giving a brief update on some dates, especially with the joint meeting coming up next Tuesday on October 15th. So this is going to be a very quick presentation. The environmental preservation section included discussion on existing conditions specific to climate change, risks to Canton, and some current initiatives that Canton has been exploring or is currently in the process of. Gave you a summary of some community feedback that we received during the public engagement section, portion of this master plan project, where people wanted to maintain the existing forested areas, increase green space and trees, protect biodiversity and habitats. There's great concern about flooding, especially in lieu of the August 2023 flood that came last year, and people were very, very passionate about that. So there's a lot of emphasis on wanting better stormwater management techniques implemented in new and future developments. And then the chapter looks at some national trends, things that other communities are doing, or things that are happening at the regional or state or even federal level levels. So we look at how we can respond to climate change, how we as a community can move that forward, how we can mitigate some of the harmful impacts of the environmental changes that we're experiencing, exploring renewable energy opportunities, and implementing green infrastructure, as well as exploring collaborative partnerships with either other public agencies, or private companies, or adjacent communities, state, federal levels as well. So some of the initiatives that we threw, or we proposed in this section focus on resource conservation, protection of biodiversity and habitats, increasing of the tree canopy, protection of the water resources, encouraging green infrastructure, as I mentioned before, and looking at renewable energy systems. Now, all these sections go into a lot more detail than I'm currently explaining, so it's a lot more detail in the text, but this is just kind of the broad initiatives that we're looking at. So as we move forward in this discussion, we want to consider, are there any other initiatives or efforts that Canton should explore that were not included in the text? Do we go far enough? Do we need to push the envelope even further, going from an encouraging position to a requirement? Green infrastructure, again, encourage or requirements for new or redeveloped properties. Open space preservation for planned developments is currently 25%. Do we increase that? Planning Commission has the capacity and has the authority to modify that requirement, given certain parameters. Do we want to change that and make modifications to make sure that that's adhered to more firmly? Does, should Canton explore opportunities to purchase more property for more natural preservation areas? Currently, there are two in the community, ZB West, and another one that starts with a Z, but I don't know how to pronounce it. So do we want to continue those types of efforts elsewhere in the community? And are there other ideas? Are there other things that you feel like we should be pursuing and implementing here in the community? Now, one of our planning colleagues, Zach Michelle, who you've met, who's been before the board many times, he went to a two-day sustainability conference in Novi this past week, and he brought up some really interesting concepts related to pushing for more composting programs, recycling, and those types of, those types of efforts. So we're going to beef up some of those sections in the sustainability chapter. So if that was something you were thinking that we needed to add more oomph to, we're going to do that with some of the information that he came back with. And one of our interns also attended a session related to the, not redevelopment, that's not the right word, but the repurposing of landfills when they have reached their capacity. So we've talked about that before when we discuss the special planning areas. So I'll be discussing the session with her tomorrow, when she's in the office, so that way we can see, is there something else that we need to add to that area or incorporate here into the sustainability section. So there are some things that we're going to be bringing in that aren't currently in the text. I just wanted to highlight those two things. So given that, if we want to dive into the sustainability chapter, are there other initiatives or other ideas or things that we should be exploring, things that we should be requiring? Do we, how do we, what are your thoughts on how we've presented these initiatives and these policies and these ideas for the future?
Couple of comments slash questions, I guess. First of all, regarding composting, and I don't know that this document is the place, but if you're gonna talk about beefing up composting, which I don't have a problem with, just need to make sure that it's done properly, because I've seen where people are doing composting themselves in their yards and that sort of thing, and it does, if not done properly, it's a big attraction for rodents and all that sort of thing. So whatever we do in that regard, we have to make sure that it's done with that in mind.
Yes, of course. So when we include this language in the master plan, no different than we talk about building materials or other things, we're kind of giving the broad strokes of the policies that we're going to pursue. We won't be getting into the details of how that program or how that policy will be enacted or maintained or enforced. We will, we will explore those after the master plan has been adopted. But yes, that language will be, will be clear that we'll make sure that it's for the betterment, and it's not going to attract rodents and unwanted critters, yes.
Other comment I have, I can't find the section in here now, where you talked about the landfills and the capping of the landfills. One of the comments was made about capturing the methane gas, and I think the sock trails landfill specifically mentioned. My understanding is that there's already an arrangement where DTE gets that, whatever the term is, whether they buy it from us, or whatever, however that works, that they're already, you have the rights to that resource or whatever. So I'm not sure anything we further do is. And I don't know what the terms of that agreement are, if there is an agreement, so that probably has to come into play as.
Okay, I can explore a little bit more.
If we make that as a recommendation for.
Yeah. Okay, I'll explore that a little bit more, thank you.
I also want to point out that Ann Arbor has a requirement for, even for residential projects, that if you take away impervious area, you make it up in some other way. So if you're building an addition on your house, or you're adding a driveway, or anything that takes away impervious area, they have a trade-off program, and you have to fill out a little worksheet and say how many rain barrels you're going to replace. There's a calculation that you do to offset the amount, the square footage that you're taking, and how much rain could fall on that. And the reason that they've done it, and they've been requiring this for years, is because they have problems with their storm sewers, flooding and backing up. But we just saw what happened back a year ago in August, when we had the huge flooding event here, and we know that what happens here affects people in Dearborn and Dearborn Heights even more so. So it might not be a bad idea to look at some sort of offset program for impervious area, maybe not on the residential scale, but maybe for public facilities, for shopping centers and, and, and public facilities in this, in the township that, you know, I just hate seeing the huge parking lots, and I appreciate that we're developing those outlots and that kind of thing. But, you know, I liked the reference in the, in the discussion in the, in the master plan about encouraging tree planting and shading in parking lots. And I think that all those things kind of go together.
Okay. Let me ask the rest of the commission, this, this trade-off program that Ann Arbor has instilled, is that something that the Planning Commission would be interested in pursuing?
I think so, yes.
Seeing some nods. Okay, all right, then I'll explore that, and we can put that.
You didn't ask us about his idea. Just kidding.
How do we feel about composting?
I mean, okay, yeah, I agree.
You know, there are, this is, you probably know this, there are areas where, even in parking lots, you can make them so that they can absorb.
Bi- 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 bi-.
I'm looking at things like that. Design, it's designed to not only park a car, but you can also have the water drain into certain areas, holding ponds, retention areas that are designed to hold water and then release it slowly. That's all should be a part of whatever the master plan has anyway, because that should be the future of how we do parking.
Well, I think.
Yep, I agree. That's, that's part of some of the green infrastructure techniques that are included in the master plan text in this chapter. So those are things that we are looking to explore. The threshold is, is whether you want to maintain that as an encouragement and make that as an incentive for a community benefit, so to speak. If someone were to come for a PDD and say, you know, that would be something we would like to do, or if there's a threshold for a specific type of development where they have to, are required to by ordinance, doing some of these green infrastructure. So that's, that's kind of where I want to gauge the Planning Commission's viewpoints on, do you want to just encourage as a community benefit, or make that as a requirement as part of their projects?
I feel like it's, without seeing the project and seeing the size of the project, it'd be hard to know if you felt like requiring it would be appropriate.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, so you're not ready to commit to a requirement yet. And that's fine, that's fine. I was just trying to get a gauge as to.
I mean, if we're talking about something like the scale of the shopping center, like where we've seen examples of this at where Dunham's is. I mean, the renderings you had for that, I thought looked great. And if we can get, we can get to that, that's great. But at the same time, if you're, to Nancy's point, if you're doing something on a much smaller scale, it's hard to envision.
Yeah.
Requiring something like that. I think you almost have to have a number of options available to be able to get to that goal.
Yeah.
Yeah. But like I said, in Ann Arbor, they require it on residential properties. So projects that I work on as an architect are very small, but they, they make you offset it. You can use rain barrels, you can use a rain garden, you could do cisterns or.
Right, but there's multiple, but there's multiple options you could try.
Exactly, exactly. So we could give people of, you know, you can.
Those things don't really create a hardship either. So I'm one, you know, if it creates a hardship on the people, but a rain barrel or something like that is affordable, and it makes an impact when you multiply it over all the residents. And keeping with that, everybody remembers the, those pear trees, ornamental pear trees. We have sod right now. I hate to see that. The sod really doesn't absorb the water. It does, but it really doesn't. But going to more natural occurring plants all over, there's a lot of communities that have already been doing that. You could see, even see a natural occurring grass, no mow grass, which actually, I mean, is a wonderful idea. And the cost is starting to get down now. So if you use more natural, like, for our, whatever our landscaping plans, encouraging at that point, I saw, I think when we did the, it was a tire place, and they just had a ton of law in there. And I was thinking, wow, that would be a great place to put no mow grass or put some kind of rain gardens in and actually absorb that water before it even gets to, you know, to the runoff off to there. So it slowly goes through, and maybe even, I don't know, I think if you put the grasses in, it'll, it would create an environment down. But there's some ability to, you know, add aggregate underneath it to, and sand and stuff like that. So it absorbs a ton much, a ton more water within a smaller area. So that takes care of the flooding a lot better.
I think the answer to your question, Erin, is I think we want to require something, but I think we need to have a number of things available, depending upon what the size and scope and type of the. scope and type of the project is.
Yeah, and that totally makes sense with the master plan. We'll talk about encouraging and exploring opportunities to, I'll phrase it in a much better way when I've thought about it more, but leaving it open where we want to encourage it and open to the capacity of requiring it based on certain parameters. And those are things that we would get into more detail and discuss when we look at like ordinance amendments, things like that. So we're not going to specify, say, that if it's a project over, you know, one acre, that you have to do this and you have to do that. That's a level of detail that we would get into with zoning ordinance amendments. I'm just looking for solid wording to put in here that gives us the legal basis to then require it.
And if anybody's interested, if you just Google Ann Arbor impervious area, you'll find their worksheet will come up as one of the top hits. And it's, this is for one and two-family residential projects. There's probably a totally different set of guidelines for commercial buildings and other types of, you know, multifamily housing. But I just really, you know, this was a pain in the butt when it first started years ago, but now we're used to it, and it's pretty easy to do and makes a lot of sense.
And I think if we were to do something like that, it would be in a phased approach. I think if we were to suddenly tomorrow start requiring that of single or multifamily, like I think a lot of people would have issues. So it would be something we would phase in implementing.
Yeah, and I don't even know that we want to do it for a single family, but I definitely think we need to look at it for commercial properties. This, and their impervious area worksheet says if it's, if the new impervious area is greater than 200 square feet, so there is a cutoff where if it's a shed, you don't have to worry about it. But if it's going to be a new driveway, then, you know, you do have to offset it. Or if it's, but you get to take away, like the old driveway, you get to reduce it by that, and, you know, so it's a worksheet.
Yeah, yeah. No, I like that. And that's something that we can look at and, you know, Ann Arbor's very different than Canton, so it would be something that even if we took that idea.
What?
Even if we took that idea, it would still be something we'd have to synthesize to our needs. But yes, I think that that's a good point.
I love the idea of more natural preservation areas. I don't know how many options are out there.
I know you specifically want that neighborhood node at Beck and Ford to be a natural area.
I'm not going down that road again, but yes, I would love that.
Nowhere in this presentation are we talking about nodes today, so.
Oh, no, please. I think those are great, they're beautiful.
More nodes. I think the node was the guy from, wasn't he from Domino's Pizza?
No, it's Noid.
No, okay, same thing.
And it was Domino's, yes.
No, I agree with Nancy. I think, you know, the township is interested in looking at places where it makes sense to purchase, to preserve area and conserve that land. Not very many areas left to conserve, but I think that is.
It'll definitely have to be somewhere where it's appropriate.
Where's the one you can't pronounce?
ZB West.
No, I know that one.
No, 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 not ZB West. Warren and Morton Ta- no.
I can't remember, but it's 25.
Warren and Sheldon.
Yeah, it was land that was donated.
Where the pond is?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
Oh.
No, there's three of them now.
Saint John's.
Mobile station on the northeast corner.
Saint John Newman's right next to it.
There's a pond on the northwest corner, directly across.
There's a little park.
Oh, yeah, yeah, by the Catholic church. Yeah, okay.
Oh, right. Oh, yeah, you see ducks out there.
Yes.
We didn't know that that was the name of it. Okay.
Okay.
So there is only two?
No, I think there's three now.
Isn't there a lot of time in the fire?
Oh, yeah, what about that one? You talking about the fire station on Warren?
Yeah.
Where they're going to build the park?
Yeah, there's going to be a park there with a picnic place.
Yeah, that one is not a nature preserve by definition, but it will be a park.
When's that going to happen, by the way? Not to get off topic.
Oh, you're going way off topic.
I think next year.
Yeah, to Summer's point, I think we're, again, using the phrase where it makes sense.
Where it makes sense, yeah.
And assuming we can find the vacant property.
Exactly.
But just to add to that, I think one of the cool things about the Topgolf development is there is an area that's, that they are conserving the land, they're putting the conservation easement. So if there's opportunities to do that with future development, I would like to pursue that as well.
Okay, so we can add that and beef that up a little bit, encourage developers to preserve open space, green space, natural areas where appropriate, where feasible? Anything else related to sustainability, the environment, trees, pervious surfaces? No? We feel good, confident, comfortable with the direction and the goals and objective statements? I mean, you've seen those already before, but feel good about that? Okay, all right. I don't have anything here to showcase, it was just a kind of a holding planner. So the implementation plan is included here to give a full summary or a full guidepost for everything that we want to do in the future of Canton. It provides the goal, the objective that we want to pursue. It includes a timeframe or a priority level. Now, the priority level is not necessarily like the ones that we should do immediately. They can refer to ones that can be completed in a short amount of time. Something like purchasing natural conservation areas for open space preservation, that would be a low priority, even though it's something that we, the Canton Township has said they wanted to do. The priority level doesn't negate how the level of interest we want to pursue it, it just means that sometimes it might take longer to complete. So purchasing property might take five to 10 years, just depending on where we're looking, what we have, what we do. Whereas something like a zoning ordinance amendment, that would have a high priority because that's something that, for the most part, can be done in-house with the planning commission, township board, maybe an advisory board if need be, but that could easily be done within one to three years. So that kind of gives you an idea as to why we included those specifications for the timeframe. And then we also identified who would be the responsible body for bringing that forward or completing that task. So a lot of these things would be initiated by Canton staff, either through the planning division, engineering, building, community development, and economic development. And then it would be something that would work on with the planning commission, the township board, maybe the DDA, depending on where a certain project or initiative or policy is being pursued. And then certain things may require an advisory board or some of the advisory boards that are in existence. If a sustainability plan is something that we move forward with, or an urban forestry master plan is something we want to pursue, it might be beneficial to bring in residents and other people who have a passion and have a professional investment in those topics, and bring them in an advisory capacity, no different than when we did the master plan advisory board. So those can be helpful as well. So they're really just a guidepost. Everything in here is a guiding framework for us to kind of look at and either check off or make strides towards. It does not mean that things can't change or be a little bit more fluid. It doesn't hold us to any specific timeframe, it just gives us an idea of where we want to go. And then it gives us an easier, an easier metrics to determine when we do our review in five years or when we do our annual report every year of how we are faring on these tasks that we wanted to accomplish. So that way, the plan has some authority, and it's not just something that we work on for two years and we put on the shelf and say we did it. You know, we want to make sure that these policies, these initiatives, these strategies come to fruition. So are there any questions, comments, concerns, edits, related to the implementation plan?
Can I ask, who wrote the body of this? Did you or did?
Who wrote the what? I'm sorry.
Who wrote the body of this? Did you or did?
I did, yes.
You didn't?
I did, yes. Were there a lot of mistakes?
No.
A lot of grammar mistakes?
Far one.
It's been a busy, it's been a busy time, so. So now the fun part is, I brought this up at the last, our last discussion, of whether the planning commission township board wanted to pursue a specific name for the master plan outside of the master plan. There wasn't a consensus one way or another, so here's three options if you want to pursue it. If you're all fine with just Canton master plan, we can move forward with that. But this was something that was brought to our attention as a means to explore, so we're exploring it. And let me know if you, if you like the idea of naming it and branding it, but you don't like these, we can discuss some more at the joint meeting on the 15th, or if you're just not interested at all.
Not a hill I'm willing to die on.
Okay.
I like the third option.
Third option?
Yeah.
It feels like Disney World.
The first one feels like a whole lifetime away.
Yeah.
Could just be Canton Forward, get rid of the 2050.
I like the bottom one.
Curious what our scouts think. You don't have a preference? Okay. No?
I don't care what it is, but I don't want to spend a half an hour talking about it.
Exactly. Well, I'm kind of with you.
Okay, let's just, hands raised. Canton Forward 2050? None, okay. Envision Canton Plan? None. Canton's Vision for Tomorrow?
I like that.
Two, three, okay? And Canton Master Plan? One, two, okay, all right.
Boring.
Boring.
Oh, and the scouts voted for Canton's Vision? Okay.
Did you vote for it too?
Both of them did.
Good job.
I think we go with that then.
Go with what? I'm sorry?
Both scouts voted for it, so I think we go with that.
For Canton's Vision for Tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, all right. It is solid.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion?
You know what? When you do it, then you should give credit to them in the final document.
Special thanks.
They're part of the public who offered their feedback.
What's your PAC number? Okay.
755.
You got that, Erin?
755.
All right. So this is just a summary of the upcoming dates. So October 15th, we'll have the joint meeting with the planning commission and the township board. This will be the draft, draft, final draft of the master plan. So this will just be compiled by staff. It won't be in its final pretty format. There will be a lot more drafts, maps, and graphics, and some images and things like that, but it won't be the final final. So please keep that in mind. It will be very text-heavy because we want to make sure that the planning commission and township board are set on the substantive points of the master plan, no different than what we've been discussing here, although it'll be a little bit nicer when it's all put together. A lot of the documents have already been shared on SharePoint. I sent an email out to everybody last Friday because I know the, I know you've all looked at it, excuse me, but the township board may not have, hasn't seen all of these. And so I didn't want to give them a 250-page document on a Thursday and say, be ready on Tuesday. So we've given them a lot of the draft chapters already. The rest of them will be going up tomorrow or Wednesday, just, you know, after we've implemented some of these changes. You will need your Canton mi.gov email in order to access this. So if you are not able to, please let me know as soon as possible so we can make sure we can get IT to work with you and get all of those worked through. Yes.
Yeah, mine hasn't worked since beginning.
Your Canton email? Okay. I'll reach out to you tomorrow and we'll figure out what's going on, and I'll connect you with IT, and we'll figure out how to get you on that. So please make sure you check that and make sure you have access to that as soon as possible.
Can I ask, at the joint meeting, I hope this isn't a stupid question, but what do you expect in concept to walk away from that meeting here with both bodies being there?
Well, you have already seen a lot of these, a lot of this stuff. They haven't. What I want to do is to make sure that both boards are on the same page. So we won't be going into each chapter at the same level of depth that we have here because we only have one meeting. So we'll be talking about the bigger, the bigger points, concepts that we have, that they haven't really seen before. So we'll be talking about the nodes, we'll be talking about some transportation initiatives, we'll be talking about the sustainability. So basically, the future land use map, so basically, the initiatives and the strategies and the substantive things that'll go forward. The chapters related to the history of Canton or our public engagement events and things that we've looked at, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on those because there's really nothing new nuance to really talk about. I want to make sure that if there are any concerns, questions, things related to the nodes, to the transportation initiatives, to the sustainability stuff, that we are all in the same room and we can talk about it. And so that way, if the board isn't settled on something, then we can all hash it out together. And so that way, when it goes to, through the beginning of the formal recommendation process, or the formal adoption process, everyone's on the same page, and there isn't anything that stops it and comes back to us for rewrites. So that's the intent.
Can I give a little bit of context also? In 2019, or 2017, when we passed, I think, the last master plan, the planning commission and the township board have to vote on it. The township board got very little time with the master plan, and it was like, hey, planning has spent this amount of time on it, you have to adopt it as is. And I think it's important to have a meeting with both bodies so both bodies are able to ask questions of one another to figure out why decisions were made and why we felt certain ways about things. But I think it's important to do that together.
I agree. One thing I noticed about the SharePoint, is it possible for you to number those chapters?
Yes, that is something that I was going to do, and it's going to be put in, not only chapter-wise of how it should be read, but also one formal document so you can see, everyone can see it all together. So however you want to digest it, whether it's chapter by chapter or a document in its entirety, those will be provided to you in both formats, yes.
Okay, great. Because I started looking at it.
I started doing, I started doing the numbering thing on Friday, and then I took it off, and I'm going to put it back in just because I think it makes it easier because SharePoint is just putting it in in an alphabetical order type thing, or when it's been updated, it doesn't let me modify it into a sequence that would make sense to us to read it. So yes, I will put those back in.
Thank you.
Especially since I've moved a couple of chapters around in my own head on how I think it should go. So, yeah, that would be helpful for everybody.
Ooh, if we're watching, we can see the Erin Schludo thought process in action.
Ooh, it's a scary thing.
It is, it is.
We'll ask your husband about that. We'll ask your husband about that.
Yeah, don't do that. Okay.
Anybody else?
So after the joint meeting on October 15th, whatever feedback that we get from the township board will really dictate the next step. So hopefully, there won't be a whole lot of edits or things that we have to change. Hopefully, we're on solid ground. So the intent is for November to be the final formatting month. So everything will go to McKenna. They already have a lot of these chapters that we've already looked at, so they've already started this. So they can just finalize it, format it, make it look beautiful. We'll make sure that we get it mid-month so we can make sure staff is good with how everything looks. And then December 2nd, it'll come back to the planning commission for your review. You make a recommendation to the township board to distribute to the public. The township board strips it to the public for 63 days as required by state law. Once we have compiled all of the comments from the public, we will present those to the planning commission and determine, do we need to discuss something in more detail? Did we miss something? Are we, is this the most amazing plan that anyone's ever read? And then we'll hold a public hearing, you'll make a recommendation for adoption, the township board has opted to be the adopting body of the master plan, so hopefully that will be done in the spring of 2025. So that is the intent, and that is the, kind of the framework of the adoption process as we move forward. We are still going to be doing a lot of outreach to the public to let them know about this public comment period. So I've already started working with our communications department to make sure that press releases are going out, social media posts are going to go out, emails will be going out, we'll be making another video announcing this that will be broadcast on our cable network. I hope that the planning commission, the township board, I will send it to the advisory board as well to let everybody know that this is the fruit of our labors over the last two years. Please read it, please, you know, provide your thoughts and comments on what you think for the history. So the public will still have opportunities to provide their feedback.
Will they access it on the township website, or?
It'll be, we can put it, we'll put it on the township website for them to look at, and we'll also have hard copies here at the administration building, if someone is, you know, wants to read it and look at it. But, yeah, I imagine most people would want to access it online.
Should there be a copy at the library?
Might be able to work that out with the library as well. We're going to put my, those, when we first started all of our public engagement, we put the comment boards, those big idea boards, at a couple of township facilities, so I have reached out to see if we can put those up again for the 63-day period, and then have a QR code at the bottom and say, you know, here's the accessibility. It's difficult to put things up in certain buildings, like the Village Arts Theater or the library, because they're very meticulous on what they do allow in terms of materials, so we might just be limited to the board and the QR code for that. But let them know that if they want the hard copy, they can come, they can come get it from us.
It'll be interesting to see the volume of public comment you get on, in addition to the actual, what the actual comments are on the final part, but I'll be really interested to see what the volume of the comments is.
Yes.
I think you've done a good job trying to educate the public about the process and the document, so.
You're here.
I've not, I've not, other communities I've been involved with, I haven't seen that level of public engagement, I'll say, so kudos to you for that.
We didn't have that level the last time we did this either, nothing like that.
No, and that's why we've done such a deep dive in this, is because there hasn't been that deep dive or that outreach to the community members for the last few updates, so.
Yeah.
We want to be transparent about the process, we want to hear what people want and what they think, not that this is, this level is going to happen every five years, but it gives us a good guidepost, and especially when we go back in five years, we can say, how have we done? What do you think? That's all I had, thank you very much. If you, again, as always, if you think of anything else, either about sustainability or the project in general, anything else that we've looked at, always feel free to reach out, call, text, I'll talk master plan every day, all day, so. And Commissioner Janowski, I'll reach out to you tomorrow, and we'll figure out what's going on with your email on the SharePoint.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Very good. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, awesome, we have a motion, support?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Eggemberger and support by Commissioner Lee, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, meeting adjourned, thank you.
Hope you got something out of this.
Yeah.